Ninety-seven thousand fifty-nine when I read one of the last financial reports. I'm just trying to-
When did you get a financial report? They, they do have a report in their minutes.
Yeah, that's the one we-
I don't typically give them to you, but they're certainly public and you may have seen-
I think you do emailers. I do get them.
Maybe Michelle sent them out.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, she does.
Yeah.
So either, either we're gonna give them something or we're not. I think we should probably decide tonight, you know. I, I hear what you're saying then, but- I don't, I don't know. The most I'd ever do if someone else made the motion is give a, give us more part of the contribution, but I'm not making the motion. But I, I think, I think maybe we should just decide the one or the other.
I need to get back to them because they, they, the commissioners believe that it was associated with the, the water being turned back on and that it caused a lot of, maybe air or something, you know, these things happen. It's not our fault if there was air, if that was the case, but it did incur a cost. And they asked Jackie to get in touch with the selectmen to see if they would assist with repairs pretty soon. And every month they're asking, what's the answer from the selectmen?
So let's go with what Fred said. What do you guys feel down there?
Yeah.
I have no problem talking about it.
You know, I, I'm concerned about setting a precedent too, but I would be happy to share this with them, share the total cost with them. Um, but I think that, I think the other piece of it would need to be that, you know, we didn't, we didn't cause this.
No, I think it's, if anything, it would be, um, your generosity to help them.
At all or nothing?
No, not at all or nothing.
Okay, okay.
No, I don't think so.
So I think I, we would, I, I'm, I'm comfortable for moving, making a motion to pay happen.
I would just be careful with the statement, hoping it didn't cause it.
There is a motion made to-
To help defray the cost by one half.
Okay. Did you get that Sharon? Is there a second? I'll second it.
Okay.
So there's a motion made and seconded for, so, discussion, Michael?
Do they have a budget for repairs?
I, I don't, I don't know. I'm sure-
I mean, what do we know about what, what they budget for something like this and continue to, I don't know.
I don't have their inner workings. I don't know exactly. I do know that, um, they're simply asking for assistance. You don't have to. I don't have that information.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion and signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Is there any noes? Is there any abstentions? Motion carries? Um, I see that Attorney McQuade has arrived, so I would need a motion for executive session made by Kitch. Is there a second?
I'll make it.
Michael? All in favor of going into executive session? The purpose is ratifica-, uh, excuse me, the AFSMI Public Works Union contract, and we will invite our labor attorney, Joe McQuade, to go into session with us. And I'd ask the audience to please wait outside. It shouldn't be a terribly long executive session.
It probably will be again.
Half of the, of the requested amount for the water matter- For car heights. That it would be from miscellaneous eight-eight-zero-one-six in the water budget.
Nine hundred fifty-eight dollars.
Thank you. Item nine A.
Did you, really?
Item nine A, so it would come from, just a friendly change there, eight-eight-zero-one-six miscellaneous, eight-eight-zero-one-six miscellaneous out of the water department budget. Thank you.
Should we give her the dollar amount? Nine, the dollar amount's nine fifty-eight sixty-six. Nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-six.
Nine fifty-eight sixty-six.
Which is half. Thank you. That's just a clarification. That's just clarification. So thank you all for coming back in at eight-ten. We exited the executive session and we're on item number six, which is action on the executive session, ratification of the AFSMI Public Works Union contract. And Joe McQuade, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. I'm Joe McQuade. We have worked cooperatively with the Public Works Union in negotiations and have reached agreement on a successor contract to, um, the, the contract that resulted from the arbitration the last time we had negotiations. I'm happy to report that we've avoided arbitration, uh, this, at this point. The contract, uh, expired, um, June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. This contract would, uh, go from July one, two thousand sixteen through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. So it's a short contract, it's standard length, but we're getting later in the process. We've agreed, uh, on wages, uh, general wage increases that are similar to other contracts we've done, two-point-five percent in the first year, two percent in the second and third years of the contract. We've, uh, agreed on healthcare concessions, um, and, uh, plans, and, uh, we've made other, uh, changes to the contract. Tonight, your, uh, this body is asked to ratify, uh, the contract by statute. You, uh, have the power to pass on two items. One is a request for funds, since this contract requests funds for coming years, uh, that is a request for funds. And, uh, secondly, if there are any, um, variations or something that is in, um, conflict with our charter. And because there are so few changes, I do not see anything in conflict, uh, with the charter. The reason you're asked to pass on that is that state law, um, more or less provides that the, uh, collective bargaining agreement would override, uh, charter provisions that were to the contrary. So, uh, those are your two tasks, uh, by statute, uh, and, uh, I would, uh, like to thank, uh, the union for their cooperation and, uh, good faith negotiations, and the, the vote is up to you.
And the union has already ratified this contract, correct?
Uh, correct.
Yes. So is there a motion to ratify the proposed AFSMI Public Works Union contract?
So moved.
Moved by Kitch, seconded by Mike. Any discussion? I too want to thank the union for their cooperative nature. It was very amicable negotiations and a simple solution, I think. And I'm very pleased to present this to the selectmen and thank the union for all their work in keeping our town safe and well managed, along with, um, our director who is not a member of the union, but, uh, does a fine job in directing our public works. Ready for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. And thank you, Joe, for your help as well.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move down to, I have nothing tonight on the ethics ordinance. In fact, Joe was working on that for us now that some of these contracts are being settled. Um, perhaps we'll be able to bring something new to you, but I don't want to take it off the agenda because it is an important change that will be coming at some point on the ethics ordinance, so we'll bring that to you at another time. The next is the town ordinance on streets and sidewalks. We did have a public hearing before tonight's meeting. There were no comments made. No one came to that public hearing, so I'll open it up to the selectmen in terms of a discussion on where we are going with the ordinance. And also, let's contemplate, um, some of the work that we need to do on sidewalks, roads, and other miscellaneous capital expenditures, which is your next item. But we need to act on the content of the public hearing, um, which, I'll open it up for you. Fred?
Yeah. We, uh, I, I, this is an old friend we're visiting again, um, and, uh, I think tonight, uh, I just wanted to talk a little, I, I think we really have to divide this issue into two parts, two components. One part is the ordinance. I think, Michael, if you're, uh, tonight, if you're ready, uh, in a little bit, you can kind of share what, what you're thinking and what we've talked about and, uh, in regards to the ordinance. And the other, of course, is, is the bond resolution that passed. So I guess we should go back, start at the beginning, since that's usually a good place to begin. Bit of humor. We do have, as I said, the two components, um, one being the bonding referendum, um, and, uh, the other, the ordinance. And in regards to the, to the bonding referendum, and actually it applies to the ordinance too, I think, I think the two, the thing we can agree on, uh, and many times it's difficult to get a, an agreement or a consensus, but I think there's a strong feeling by the community and a strong feeling by the selectmen that our sidewalk infrastructure is not in good shape, it's in very bad shape, and we have to do something about it. So I thi-, I think we're all there in, uh, in talking with, in talking with people, um, in the community, that seems to be a loud and clear message. The bonding referendum speaks, um, to the fact that the sidewalks, um, that should be reconstructed, repaired, replaced, should be within that one-half mile of the schools. And so what I tried to do was just to come up with a, a simple statement, um, a very broad policy statement, and try to get your feedback to see if, uh, you folks are where I am on this. And, and basically what I put down was that this is an, just regarding now the, um, the bond resolution and the half-mile sidewalks from schools. And I, and I said, okay, well, I think there's general agreement that the town, um, within available financial resources, uh, that's key. We can't do this all at once. We, we know that, but there's no way we could repair everything in one fell swoop. It's gonna have to be implemented in stages. So that, I thought, well, okay, we'll replace repair sidewalks located within one-half mile of our public schools. Due to that s-, cost of the, associated with the struct-, uh, project, the infrastructure project, we know the work can't be completed all at once. Rather, we're gonna have to implement some sort of a phase-in policy until the project's completed. The one-half mile school zones, replacement zones shall be established by the public works director. Uh, I think, I think Rick has a very good handle on, on, uh, where we are with the sidewalks and, and that would be a good place to, to put that responsibility. The board of selectmen, uh, public works director, and the complete streets group shall determine the phase-in timeline. And I, I think we, we do have to recognize, we have the four possibilities, there's four schools, um, which ones are gonna be first, uh, that decision has to be made. We have to start somewhere. And, uh, and I think Rick has done some work on that and has some suggestions that, and I think were, were well thought out. So I did, that, that's what I wanted to toss out, to see if, if you, if the board is, is kind of in that same place that I am regarding, and I think, Michael, regarding the bonding question.
Michael?
One of the things that we kept coming back to, Fred alluded to, is kind of policy versus ordinance. So ordinance-wise, what we have, I think we've agreed, um, has been rarely have ever enforced. It probably is illegal, it probably isn't within our power to charge, um, and effectively isn't, you know, we're not enforcing it. So, um, having it be replaced with something else, um, I think we're very much in favor of that. But we don't want to, uh, we want to make sure that the pol-, or the, uh, ordinance itself that we do replace it with is very clear, and what we're putting in there is something that, um, is legal and make sure it, it provides a very clear outline to the homeowners as to what needs to be done. So for example, in looking at many of the other towns around us, Newington, um, some of the smaller ones, East Hampton, um, their policies are, or the ordinances are very simple and easy to understand. So for example, if a homeowner damages their sidewalk with either their vehicles or in the process of doing something, they're obviously liable for the, for the expense of, of replacing it. They damage it. So damage to sidewalks is, is liable to the homeowner. It could be, um, you know, if it's, um, mother nature doing something, if it's a storm or whatnot, uh, that would be something that the town would assume responsibility for. If there's, um, replacement of handicap ramps, um, in an area, that's something that, uh, most of the towns in the area, they replace that if it's, if it's something ADA. So there's a number, probably a dozen or so, different common thread ordinance, um, ordinances that relate to the specific clear-cut, no gray area issues. That would be what I would want to replace it. And we'll come back to the board, Fred and I, after confering with others, uh, the specifics of those that are very clear-cut. In terms of policy, as Fred has said, within the half-mile, um, we think it should be set as a policy. Those are the ones that, as a town, we want to focus in on, as the budget allows. We have a million dollars to spend right now, uh, we could prioritize that with Rick. I know Rick's already provided, um, an outline of what the cost would be for the ones he suggested. I believe the, uh, ones within the schools, the six streets that he's listed out, Fairview, uh, Fairview, Waverly, Highland, Freestone, Homestead, and East Main Street, total about three-point-six miles, if I'm not mistaken.
You have a handout, Rick?
Yeah.
Nineteen hundred-
We shared with Fred.
Yeah, about nineteen thousand feet of it. Now in-
Fred, do you have a copy?
I think, the same, I think I shared with you was-
Yeah, you did. If you got another one, I'll think you did. I don't know if I have a, that, that.
Michael, can I have a copy?
Oh, you got that.
Thanks.
So, um, now-
Thank you, Rick.
In having, in, in discussion with Rick earlier, um, the cost here is replacement of all it, Rick is, Rick feels very strongly that instead of just repairing or shaving or other things, the cost that he's given us here represents replacing all of that, three-point-six, uh, you know, three-point-six miles within that time. I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but, um, what I, what, what Fred and I discussed also was to try to, under a policy issue, um, we, we don't want to put it in the ordinance, but as a policy issue, um, if there are sidewalks in need of repair, um, outside of that area, outside of that half-mile of the schools, uh, we, we were considering doing some kind of, um, program. Maybe we set aside of the million dollars we have for the, um, for the bond, we set aside maybe a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is now a program that is funded at the will of the board of selectmen, and it provides homeowners, um, outside that half-mile area, um, fifty percent of the cost would be paid for by the town out of that budget. So if they want to get it done sooner, if they have a repair or something needs to be replaced in their sidewalk, but it's outside the half-mile, they can participate in a program that allows them to, um, they would pay fifty percent of the cost, and the town would pick up fifty percent of the cost. Obviously with the right kind of bidding and submitting the correct paperwork or whatever programs we submit, uh, we feel that might be a good use of the funds. It would allow us to stretch that money outside of that area. And, uh, again, we want to, we want to confer with legal to make sure that's something that can be done, but there are other towns that do similar programs like that. Um, so we want to make, again, we know it's only a million bucks, um, but we want to take that money and stretch it as far as we can in areas outside of that. But again, the half-mile focus as a policy, um, we think is an easy one for the town to do with the complete streets and also working with Rick and all. And we can get going on that pretty quickly. Actually, it's a fun, yeah.
Done a lot of work.
Yeah, the, uh, I, and I think that, that with the, with the policy piece of it, um, we did create, um, we did create the sidewalk committee, a resolution, uh, creating that sidewalk committee earlier in the year. And one of the, it has several charges, uh, including the bid request and, uh, review of the bids, et cetera. But the first, the first one is a review of the sidewalks in need of repair. And a lot of that work fortunately has been done by different people, so, um, we, I think that can be shared, all of that research can be shared, and some of it here, Rick has right, passed out to us tonight. But that, that can be shared with that group, but it's, uh, very important that we, uh, look for some additional members for that, uh, committee so that they can, uh, the committee can start to do what it's charged with doing. We, uh, might be able to come up with a bare minimum to hold a meeting, uh, right now, but we do need some more members, uh, on, on that sidewalk committee. It's not quite, it's not sexy like the parks in Raccoon, so people don't come flooding in and say, I want to be on the sidewalk, but it's important. So, uh, we, uh, we'll continue, uh, if you know of anyone, uh, or you're talking with, with folks who you think might have interests, please, uh, uh, ask them if they'll, if they'll consider being a member. And I, I've talked to a few people recently, and I think if we all do, we can get the word out.
So I, I just have a question, because I know that you started with talking about, Michael, you did about, um, an ordinance and its legalities. So are we looking just for policy basically as we move forward, or are we looking at ordinance?
Uh, that's, of course, always up to the board of selectmen, but I thought, since the, the issue on the bonding, that's more or less been decided by the voters, so we, I think we just have to decide and kind of move forward on that. Now, the ordinance is, is a more complex question, and that, that has to be decided by, I think, collectively by the board. I, I have no, I, I think, once before, philosophically, I, I'm probably, uh, further over than most of the members on, or all the members on, presently on the board, because I thought that it's the town's responsibility, but I recognize that, um, it can't be done in one fell swoop, and it's gonna have to be phased in. So I, you know, I'm amicable to having an ordinance, I mean, I, but that, that's a collective decision. I think, I, Michael, you?
I, I agree. And, um, I may have a copy, um, I'll provide to the board of Newington's policy, whether it's built and a few others, and what their ordinances are. Again, there's a lot of overlap from some of the surrounding towns as to how they handle it, uh, but I think it is good to have that structure in place. Ours is, is, is two bare threads, so I think we need to put some kind of structure in place, uh, review process, uh, making sure that we're consistent, um, across the board. But I like having to do them both. I don't think the, the ordinance should be too involved, but I think the policy should be more, you know, covering what's the goal of the town when it comes to sidewalks and use of it, et cetera.
But the ordinance would be the most restrictive part of it, is that correct? Is that how we're viewing this?
That's how I see it.
I, yeah, I agree, yes.
So I think, I think we need to really examine that as we get closer. Um, Fred, I, I really, really appreciate it, and, and Michael too, the, the effort you've put in, and I, I, I like your wording for, um, how we, how we should proceed. The fact that we're clearly upfront speaking about available resources. I mean, that's, I mean, that's a reality, talking about doing it in stages and the phase-in policy. Uh, the other piece that, um, especially appeals to me is the piece that, um, talks about the shared cost between homeowner and, and town. It, it may need a, a little more tweaking, but, and so I, I would, if you could get us those other policies, take a look at it and see where exactly we would fall, um, in regard to that fifty percent. But it has some appeal, I think it might make homeowners be, um, more favorably move to repair sidewalks, and I like the fact that we are going to replace rather than fix. I, I think that makes the most sense. So, nice job, guys.
I agree. I'm there on a lot of this. I have a few more questions. For example, uh, I think this works great on our walks. Uh, I'm not sure where we stand on Route sixty-six and on Main Street. I think we have a few lawsuits right now. I think by, by getting rid of the ordinance altogether would be problematic at this point. I don't believe it's a town we could afford to take this animal on. Um, so back to the way Fred phrased it, um, and Mike, I think you, you're right, we, we, it's a two-part, um, that they're two different animals, and I think we should keep it that way. We have a million dollars that we need to put into sidewalks that are clearly needed. Uh, I have a few suggestions, for example, uh, Freestone Avenue, in my opinion, should be a one sidewalk road. I don't believe if we're gonna spend a million dollars, it should be for both sides of the road. In no way do I want to put sidewalks, brand-new sidewalks, on two sides of any road. I'm not interested. If we are gonna spend taxpayers' money, uh, and we're trying to make a route safer, I believe it should be, we will get double, you know, literally, uh, we'll get a lot further safe paths for all the residents. So for example, using Freestone Avenue, where it currently has both sides of the street. I think in the future, if we are gonna take this on, and this is gonna become town responsibility, and we are gonna spend millions upon millions of dollars, I think it's very important to make the decision, one safe path on double the roads is better than two safe paths on one road. If our goal is to make walkability safer, especially in the short term, and in the future, if the other side of the street, uh, we choose to then, uh, if we come into lots of money in the future, and we want to do the other side of the street, we can talk about it. The way I look at it, we are trying to get safe paths for children, everybody in our community, I think one side of the s- street suffices. So I would personally, that would be how I would go about it. Um, I think part of our language is problematic with the half-mile. I think maybe part of the road needs to be a half-mile. I think in some cases, if we take out a map, we're gonna see, um, the other half of the road might not be in the half-mile. I think that isn't a good way to look at it. I think we should, if we're gonna tackle a project, we should take it on and we should start to finish. So in other words, Freestone Avenue is another example. If the Main Street end falls within a half-mile, but the other end doesn't, well, I think we should do the road. So I don't want to stop at the half-mile mark, I want to make sure we're all-
So that the road is completed, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I think if we're going to take this on, let's do it i- in a systematic way that is, uh, we can get as far as we can with the resources we have. The bottom line is, we have about a million dollars. Um, I think if we choose to only take on one side of each street, it's a starting point. We then create a nice, safe, and we may get a few extra roads, you know, Rick put, put some roads in front of us here. I think it's nice, especially if they're interconnected. I think it makes sense to, to work your way. Uh, this is a big, this is not gonna happen overnight. This is a big animal. Uh, and in time, we may decide, the other half of the street sidewalk may, residents may want it abandoned, and they have that right. You don't need a wide sidewalk at both sides of every street. So, and that can be future public comment, that can be future meetings, we can bring in residents and get their input. That's fine. I think we'll see in time that that's the best for Portland. Back to the ordinance, I don't believe at this time, uh, we could afford to remove this ordinance. I think if we were gonna do some changes, the only two changes, and actually, I shouldn't say the only two, because Mike listed a few other that were good suggestions that I might get on board with. But the immediate two that come to mind for me are, uh, if, if somebody wants to upgrade their sidewalk, uh, if it involves ADA, that would be the town, so I think that would be a new change, because the reality is, when they read their deeds and they took on the responsibility of the sidewalk, it was more, most likely a straight sidewalk, and it was most likely not ADA compliant. This is something in time that's changing. I don't believe that additional burden should be put on, and that would be a welcome change to the ordinance. And the other one is, if, and this one, I, I still, I don't know how we go about it, but, uh, if there's a tree that's identified to be saved, and the sidewalk was originally straight, and everybody's pushing to save that tree, the burden shouldn't go on the homeowner to rainbow the sidewalk around it. If that is what the town as a whole would like, I believe that's outside of whatever the homeowner originally saw on their property, and I'm not sure it's feasible in all cases, but I believe those are two things that were not in the original, uh, intent of, uh, what people understood when they took on their property that came to the sidewalk. So my position as of now would be, uh, not too many changes to the ordinance, because quite frankly, we can't afford to, and, uh- And back to Fred's point, we've got a million dollars, we've got to figure out where to spend it and we should do it in a system that gets us as far as we can with as much as we can.
I, I do want to send down to each of you, in case you don't have it with you, the section of the ordinance that was in the, it's, it's actually just that front page to be rescinded. The part that I'm struggling a little bit with is that first one where it says expenditures, seventeen dash eighty-one. The Board of Selectmen be and are hereby authorized to build and maintain sidewalks to an extent that will not exceed in cost 15% of the amount that is annually expended on its highways. Do you have any history on that, Rick? And I think if we spend, let's say we spend the million dollars in a year, you're, you're in violation, I believe, of that.
Bar.
Yes. The second section that's under consideration, we're looking toward a policy that might actually be, be in concert with that, depending on what the policy ends up being. I'll just read it for the audience. Whenever the owner of any land fronting upon any street or highway in this town shall neglect to make, pave, or repair any sidewalk within the time and in the manner ordered by the first selectman, or shall neglect or refuse to keep his sidewalk in good repair, it shall be the duty of the first selectman to make or repair the same and the cost of making or of repairs and interest thereon shall be the responsibility of the owner of the adjoining premises. So within the policy that's being talked about, there is an element of that which I, as Kitch said, I think that your work is very good and I think we're getting closer to what we're achieve, want to achieve and that is a safe way for people to walk and in a practical way, given our limited resources. And then the last section that we considered repealing is assessments and collection. The Board of Selectmen shall determine the assessment for the cost of making or of repairs to sidewalks and the tax collector be and is hereby authorized to collect said assessments upon the same conditions as the tax of real property is levied and collected. So Bruce Chudwick had come and talked to us about the potential of making assessments. This isn't saying you have to, but it gives you that authority, which I think is okay. You don't have to enforce that. So the only section that I think we might want to rescind is that section regarding expenditures. The other two, this policy that you're putting forward may actually work within this ordinance and we can always amend it going forward.
My only other thought, instead of just completely removing the first one, which is clearly problematic when we're going to be exceeding 15%, could we keep that and then, and it doesn't have to be 15%, I don't even know what that dollar is, but I, and then add a caveat at the end that says unless part of a bonding situation or part of a major sidewalk. Because that, I'm just, my fear is we should start to talk about what we're going to spend through here and at least this does that. It says no more than 15% because-
You can, you, you can't do that tonight because you'd have to send it to another public hearing. You, you could rescind the language that's there and then put something new in. I don't know, it's your, whatever you want to do, you can leave it alone. You're not in compliance though with this, I can tell you that. But in the future, if you want to change it, you can add to it. You can, if you rescinded this portion tonight, the expenditures, then you could come up with something to put in there. I don't know if, if you want to put something in there as far as expenditures go or not.
Actually, depending on how you read that Susan, I think we might be in compliance if you add up the 20 years that we've done nothing.
Well, you can't, you can't.
I think we have enough money. Because that's what, I don't think we're exceeding-
It's annually expended.
All right. Well, we're not, we're not exceeding it, that's for sure. But I agree, we should, whatever we do, it should be clear and if we, I think if we are going to move forward, we either have to, like you said, rescind that or we have to tweak it so we're not in violation. I don't think we should blatantly violate this. I have no problem with, with a simple amendment in a bonding situation or whatever, or if the majority of this board wants to rescind it and for the time being until we can come up with a feasible number, whatever, I, I, I'm fine with it.
Anybody else have thoughts on that?
Ultimately, we're going to have to do something with it, but it doesn't have to be done. I mean, it's been all these years and, and so there's, you know, and I don't think there's any immediate need to, to, but-
Well, you did say in your public hearing that you would ask people's comments for the rescission of sections seventeen eighty-one, seventeen eighty-two, and seventeen eighty-three. So you can act on this or not. I mean, if you, if you took out seventeen dash eighty-one, then you'd be able to spend the million dollars. If you don't take it out and you spend the million dollars, I don't know if anybody's coming after you. But you're, you're, we're trying to get closer to enacting what we're doing.
So can we look at it this way, that tonight we had a discussion about this and maybe we post another public hearing because I'm assuming this is going to get some coverage and I think that because we at least appear to be closer to some kind of solutions, that maybe another time, another posting of a public hearing would be beneficial.
Sure.
But, I mean, when do, when do we think, Rick, maybe you know the answer to this, when do we think that a sidewalk project might be undertaken?
If I could. You know, I'm glad you asked the question because I think they, you've talked about it for like over 20 years that we really haven't done yet and you may, I'm very glad that you may, and it's not an easy thing to do something like that necessarily. You took the first step, which is great. We're, we're there. What I was hoping we could maybe do concurrent, for example, is, you know, you've got a sidewalk committee, they've been meeting for a year and a half or more. You know, you're, you're doing good, but more public hearings, more talking, more subcommittees, I mean, I'm always anxious to go anyways. And, and I think you're at a point, kind of where you could hopefully say to me, we would like to do the following sidewalks. I then could begin the process of survey and design and engineering. If I got some direction and again, I could begin to at least move forward because once you give me the go-ahead on whatever you choose to do, it's six or eight months of survey, engineering, design, and I would have a set of plans ready in, in the unlikely event that became some money available, for example. You don't have to do it, but at least you got something on the table. If you could at least get to the point to make the decision to say, I would like to do the following sidewalks. Get a start, Rick. Go ahead and get a start on this thing. In the meantime, we're going to work out the details of our policy and our ordinance and all those things and I'd, I would at least be able to have a set of bidding documents available, not that you'd have to bid it or even if you weren't ready, but at least you've begun to do something. We've done nothing other than talk about it. And I'm not, no disrespect at all. I mean, I'd, so that's food for thought, I think.
You know, I, I'd like to see the board too, Rick, say that they endorse the concept that Michael and, and Fred have brought forward in terms of naming some of those streets. And, you know, we're not going to put it in concrete tonight, but we're saying that we endorse the streets that have been mentioned and that we send this to, I think we need to send it to the sidewalk committee that we established, which includes you as an ex officio, as well as Michael and Fred and other members. And that includes review of sidewalks in need of repair. So the recommendation would be coming from the selectmen for those streets that were mentioned earlier. Preparation of the bid request, which would allow you to then start that work to bring to the committee. Issuance of the bid request, the review of the bids once received, as well as the selection and oversight of the actual work. So I think that if this board is inclined to endorse the, the concept of the streets within the half mile of sidewalks and the suggested side streets that Mr. Pelton pointed out as a member of the committee, and furthermore, we are sending this to the sidewalk committee that was established by ordinance, January fourth, two thousand seventeen, and ask that that committee meet and start the work. To me, that's a motion and then I think we can deal with, with the-
Particulars afterwards.
Yeah.
So, so I'll be, I will be happy unless Fred, you or, or Michael would like to make that motion.
Okay. You can certainly make the motion unless Michael wants to make it. If you, if that is not the author of it, is not-
So I'd like to move that we, on the advice of the sidewalk committee to date, that we move to repair, replace the sidewalks within half, one half mile of schools, that we go out to bid for the work. We prep the bid and we review the bids when they come in, not to surpass the monies in, in the referendum.
And I think in concert with the sidewalk-
In concert with the sidewalk committee complete streets as, as established.
Right. January of this year.
January fourth, seventeen.
Right. Is there a second?
Second.
Fred? Sharon, did you have any questions on that motion?
We've got it.
That's good because I probably can't repeat it the same way.
There you go. What were the roads again?
Michael?
Fairview Street, Waverly, Highland, Freestone, Homestead, and East Main Street. Those six streets have a total distance of nineteen thousand feet, three point six miles. Is that correct, Rick?
That's correct.
Now, a question, I know Bennett mentioned on Waverly, it was both sides?
Freestone, sorry.
Freestone, Freestone.
There's a couple. And I, right, there's probably a, it's not going to be cut and dry like I said.
No, absolutely.
But, but Freestone was a good one because I drove down it. One side is literally decrepit. The church side was in nice shape. It was very straight. It was practiced to keep it on that side and the other side, and this is my opinion, the other side was in pretty poor shape and almost made more sense to not be there. There were pushes coming over a lot in that one section that I looked. I think in that case, we could get a lot further. I didn't know what, as a whole, and there's going to be some roads where it just doesn't make sense and I get that. I believe that would be left up to you guys as a whole.
So that would be part of a bid process, wouldn't it?
No, in part of Rick identifying why we did it on two sides and why we don't, in my opinion.
Let me, let me throw another one out at you. Go ahead, go ahead.
I was just going to say one thing, and also I think getting complete streets involvement is as well.
Sure.
To make sure they're actively giving suggestions as well because I think that would help out.
Well, complete streets is part of the committee as well.
Just want to make sure.
It's got, it's got to work.
Two members are from the complete streets.
It needs to function and I can't just sit here and say wipe out one whole side of the road. That, that's not fair because I didn't personally walk every inch of it, so.
I kind of have. So, um, let me throw one more at you here now. And I'm not suggesting anything. There's, there's two, there's kind of two choices you have, two, two options that I think probably make the most sense. And if, for example, and I sent them, I shared an email with Fred and Mike, I went to the last subcommittee meeting and I kind of shared this. I wrote, maybe it helps, maybe it doesn't. I wrote, Mike stopped and asked if I would walk some sidewalks with him, this is back in March oh nine, and helped decide which ones to replace. I told Mike I would be glad to, but that I provided info necessary to make an informed decision in my August twenty-fifth information that I provided to you. I wrote, I see that you have the subcommittee meeting on three thirteen and wanted to share a couple ideas for prioritizing and moving forward with your sidewalk improvement plan. The last page of the attachment which you have looked at. So one item, option one, if you have determined that you want to accept maintenance of sidewalks within the state's right-of-way, that's an if, you could replace and widen the sidewalks along Main Street from Middlesex Avenue to Indian Hill Avenue for approximately one million dollars. That section of sidewalk has the most trip and falls of any sidewalk, probably has the most pedestrian traffic and is the most visible. It would probably be a good one to set the tone for future replacements. So if you, the board were saying to me, and I don't, I'm not suggesting you do, if you, if you have intention of, for example, making improvements as part of your half a mile, which is what you suggested, that would probably be the one to do for any number of reasons. There is only, it is only on one side. It is the one that has the most trips and falls. It is the one that has the most traffic. It is also the most visible one and you could gain a little on aesthetics and it is about a million bucks. So that's, keep that in the back of your hat, but I don't know where you're at on taking over sidewalks, for example, on Marlborough Street. And I'm not suggesting you do or you don't. I kind of in a way think you're probably going to because the state isn't going to do it. If you were going to make that, if you were going to go there, I believe that your best shot at starting this would be to do Main Street for the following reasons. If you weren't, then again, you're going to look at, other than that, you would replace Fairview, Waverly, Freestone, blah, 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 the ones you talked about for approximately also a million dollars. These are the oldest, in the worst shape, are all somewhat interconnected and are all located in the downtown area. So you have two good options to, to go for. And again, I know you got a subcommittee meeting. I mean, we could study these things till the cows come home and we've been doing that. What I'm hoping you're going to do is, is give me some direction as to what to proceed with, and I realize that's not tonight. And I'm not suggesting, but when you get to, to saying, okay, we're going to, we're going to only do it on one side of the street, then I need to rethink, which is perfectly fine, the sheet that I gave you and the cost because you would then most likely be able to do additional sidewalks in that general area. So I would, I would kind of want to, kind of want to think that out. So if you're, I'd like you to think out if you are so inclined to say, let's only have a sidewalk on one side of the street and I can certainly, that certainly has merit. It gets a little tricky, I think, if you're Mr. Jones on this side and we say all of a sudden, hey, we're, you know, we're going to do that side and we're going to rip yours out. Now realize there's a cost to abandon a sidewalk. So there's not only the cost, so again, if you're going to remove a sidewalk and seat it in, probably you're going to expend about half, not quite, but probably, I'd have to factor that in and I think it's a good, good thing for you to, to discuss. So keep that in mind. Again, if we're going to remove one side, there is a cost involved in that. It's probably a third of the cost of actually building the sidewalk.
Just for clarification, my thought is as of now, do one side of each street that has two.
But I don't think you want to leave that defective sidewalk that's got all kinds of trips and falls and ADA. I don't think you really want, again, I, I'm not telling you what, I'm just thinking it out a little further. I think your goal is to make pedestrian traffic safer. I would gather that's the main goal. Forget aesthetics, forget all the other, not forget them. I don't think in good conscience, I would say, okay, I'm going to build a nice new safe sidewalk over here and I'm not going to, but I'm not going to preclude the, then you might want to post the other sidewalk and say, don't walk here because it's not safe. You follow what I'm kind of saying?
But we're kind of doing that by-
Well, we've been kind of doing that for the last thirty years, but I'm, I'm just saying if you're going to, if you're going to get into a good, successful, well-thought-out sidewalk improvement project, which is thankfully what you're going to do, I kind of, I got to think that one out. I kind of think that, I think if you're going to designate a, a number of streets to improve and you're going to go one side, and I think that's, has merit, not in every place, but like the library side. So you got, when, I think maybe, for example, and I'm not looking to get too crazy, but I mean, I think maybe you, your thought on this end of Freestone, that side of East Main where it's not so much business would be okay. I'm not so sure on that side you want to do that. But again, that's my own personal field.
And the routes to schools, you know, you're going to require youngsters crossing quite a bit.
And, and that's okay. You know, High Street, for example, just so you know, High Street has a sidewalk on one side of the street and that's, that's, that's your, your pedestrian way to three schools.
Well, not the whole street.
Pretty much of it, most of it.
Yeah, but, but there is some, right, Rick?
Very little. There's only a little bit of sidewalk on both sides on this end, very, very, very little. The majority of High Street has one sidewalk on one side and it's-
Bartlett Street has one side, right?
Bartlett Street has, most of it doesn't have any sidewalk.
And most of it doesn't have any.
So I'm just throwing stuff out so you, what I, what I'd like to do in a nutshell is there's more thought, but I'm just asking you, I'm throwing these things out so you can think about them. I'm hoping that you can give me some direction in the near future to say, Rick, we want to do- I'm hoping that you can give me some direction in the near future to say, Rick, we want to do the following streets, we want to abandon the sidewalk.
Well, we have, we have a motion on the floor, and it, it includes the suggestion that the committee came forward with. Right, it was made and seconded.
But you might want to, go ahead.
But that doesn't, that's not cast.
No, I can't really start with that.
Or in concrete.
Seeing that I created this cloud, if I could just throw in one, I like what you said, and maybe that is a better way to go about it, where certain parts we do abandon, and I, obviously, I have no horse in this race, I leave that discretion, but I think on East Main where I looked, or not East Main, oh, yeah, East Main also, but on Freestone, the one section I looked at, in my opinion, should be clearly abandoned. And I think if, like what you're saying, a third value, then re, and I hate to have you rebudget, but.
We're not making, but, you know, your discussion is helpful, but we're not making the decision tonight. What we're, what we said, I believe, in the motion Kitch made, is that these streets are suggested by us to go to the committee for further work, so that a bid can be made and put out there. But that's not to say that if the committee, as established in January, wants to change, bring it back.
And they can talk about exactly.
And we have two of our members in that group.
My intent was to get the ball rolling.
Yes.
My intent is just be practical, and I think you guys are going to.
Yeah, and the motion should be stressed, right, Kitch, that it's a suggestion.
Right.
I mean, the good stuff is, we're talking about it.
Right. I don't think it's going to, I don't think the final product is going to be what we're looking at tonight.
And if I could just throw in one.
And Rick's part of that committee, too.
Like Freestone, for example, there's a portion that doesn't connect, and if we wanted to look into fix, you know, finalizing those few little spots, instead of, and abandoning a large portion of a section that we don't need, that, to me, makes more sense. And we could go on all night, this needs to be, the committee.
And I think it's a good example of why this is a committee work.
Yes, 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 we're all in the same.
And I hope that you're able to attend, or at least review the minutes.
And if not, please relay what I said, and I think you guys are, you know.
Yeah, those, those are all good suggestions, and I think that the fact that we do have a sidewalk committee, we have complete streets, you have a lot of people who have an interest and a lot of skills and knowledge that can.
And the public works director is part of it.
Yeah, and Rick has, obviously, institutional and the practical part of it is. But that, and all those suggestions are good, there are, those are the two options that I think Rick had shared, shared with us before, the Main Street option and the neighborhood option. And, and that, the committee, as it's working, can, can take into consideration, and, you know, the facts that there are places where, you know, if you're running aside, if you're, if you are running and you get at a half-mile plus two houses, Rick should have a discretion, and I think he does, that's a discretion to.
Finish it off.
Complete that piece, you're not going to, you know, leave somebody hanging, and, and that's just common sense. So, and, and there are places where the one, one sidewalk might make a whole lot of sense, and the committee can collectively look at it and say, oh, well, there's the pluses and here's the minuses. I know Freestone does get a lot of traffic, and I was thinking, as you were saying, there's also a lot of church traffic there, so there's that to consider on both sides, but then you get down further on Freestone, and, and you're right, there's fragmented pieces to the sidewalk, so, but, but I, I think it was.
Sharon, do you want to reread the, the motion?
Kitch moved in on the advice of the sidewalk committee, moved to replace the sidewalks within one-half mile of schools, go out for bids, and review bids when they come in, in concert with the sidewalk committee is established in January, the hearing in January. And then the six streets, and I want to need your help here, I have Waverly, Freestone, Fairview, but I don't have the other three.
Yeah, so it's, it's Fairview, Waverly, Highland, Freestone, Homestead, and East Main Street.
Is there anything you wanted to amend to that, Kitch, or suggest?
I want it under the leadership of the Director of Public Works.
And should we, should we say replacement and/or repair, or just replacement?
I thought, I thought that what we're looking for is replacement.
Let me make sure, get to clarify.
Do we need to add anything in about potential, what we talked about, both sides?
Yeah, because I think this has been a good conversation, and I'm going to tell you, I never even, I never even considered that sidewalks on one side of the street, and, and a third of the cost is pretty substantial as we move along. I, I was still in my mind thinking about potential safety and the fact that we're talking about the areas that lead to schools, and what that could potentially mean for kids who don't live on the side that have, that live on the side that don't have sidewalks, they're going to have to cross in order to be able to, to walk safely. And, and the safety piece of this is, to me, as important as fixing the sidewalks, so, I think it has merit, but I'm, I guess I would be comfortable saying, as Rick does his review, that he can advise the sidewalk committee and the complete, and its members as to the efficacy of, of one-site, one-site street sidewalks. Does that work?
I think you had a comment.
I'm glad, this is a good, good conversation, but I, just so you understand, I'm kind of at a point, and I'm, and I'm glad I am, I can't do much more, if I will be, I've, I've given you, I've given you all the information on the cost of doing what you want to do on each street, so I've done. So let me, if I can, and I, I think it'll help to clarify for me, anyway. So if you're saying to me, proceed, my next step in proceeding is to begin to survey and to begin to, to move ahead, and I'm not, I'm not there, I don't think. I don't think we're, collectively, I don't think we're there, and that's fine, that's perfectly fine. I think another subcommittee, I think if we flush this out at a subcommittee, subcommittee meeting with all the players hopefully involved, that we, we could have one more meeting and, and I can get consensus from you folks. I, I mean, really, the subcommittee, you need to provide me more direction, is what I'm kind of saying. If, if we leave it right now, that, for example, those are streets, and I agree with you, I think those are the key streets, and I think those fall within the number of the monies that you have. But I need a little more, do you really, do you want me to begin the detailed work of surveys? I don't think you do.
Not yet, no.
Good, good, that's, that's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand what you're, where you're at.
And just for my, yeah, and maybe I'm the one that's creating all, when practical, something to that effect should be done. When practical, or it makes more sense, or it makes it safer to remove the sidewalk from one side, because I was just using that one area, it was about third, you know, fifteen houses that, that I just, it's simply, it's an ineffective sidewalk, it would be much safer to get the children on the other side, which they're doing anyway. They zigzag back and forth, some parts of the street have it at one side now, so don't, I'm just trying to come up with a much cleaner, and I don't want to be the guy, and I, and I think Rick does.
I'm not, I, no, I can't be the guy, so I'm looking for you, I think the next meeting, a key point, I can move, if you folks say to me, for example, those streets that I gave you, we like those, but on Freestone, we want to do, we want to have a sidewalk only on one side from here to there, perfect, and I can know that I don't have to worry.
At that level of detail, you're not going to get tonight.
No, and I'm not looking, I'm not looking for it, not looking for it.
So the motion, I believe, says that you would begin to review.
I've already reviewed.
Okay.
I'm as far as I can go right now.
But, but the next piece of review, or what the next, what the next subcommittee would need to do is to think about some of the things that were brought up this evening in regard to changes of what we, of what we traditionally think of as sidewalks, right?
We're, we're on the same page, that's, I just wanted to be sure we were on the same page.
And if it would make it clearer for anyone else, or if you think it's, it's necessary, I'm fine with pulling the motion back until we're at another point, but I think this may get us moving in the right direction.
And I think maybe, maybe, Kitch, if I could, if you, if the beginning of the motion just says, at this, at the, we suggest, or something, the motion is to suggest, as opposed to, this is definitely what we're going to do, let's suggest.
Or one, one suggestion would also work, the suggestion on the streets that were detailed, that would leave the other option open until we decide, if, just using that one, the word.
But I, I just want to help and make sure that Sharon is aware of what it is you want that motion to say.
It can be amended.
Could you amend that a little bit, maybe?
So Sharon, what have we got right now?
Well, I think, based on what Susan said, we suggest that on the advice of the sidewalk committee, move to replace the sidewalks within one-half mile of the schools, go out for bid, review bids when they come in, in concert with the sidewalk committee is established in the January hearing, and then at one point, you said, under, under the leadership of the public works director, you still wanted that in there?
Yes, but he's, he's going to be the advisor, the main advisor for this committee.
Well, he's part of the committee, he's already part of the committee.
Oh, okay, so.
In conjunction with.
In conju.
He's already part of the committee.
In conjunction with, and, and the next part, go ahead, Fred, what did you say? Insofar as.
The one suggestion, we, rather than limiting ourselves just to, if we're, Rick's suggestion, we had two parts. One was neighborhood streets, Freestone, and East Main, et cetera, the other is Main Street.
So the streets as listed and potentially Main Street?
Yeah, that would cover.
Or.
And/or, yes, and, and/or potentially Main Street.
Yeah, I think we have to make a decision, it's one or the other.
Yeah. Okay, so, so or, or Main Street.
And they're both by the bridge.
The streets as listed or Main Street.
Just, just talking about, does this.
And that's all part of the motion, Sharon.
Could you make it look level?
Let me add another element, too. One of the things we talked about earlier was creating a program where outside the half-mile area, we put, we put aside some of that million-dollar bond, which could be a hundred grand, whatever. Should that be, should that be done as a separate?
I think that's part of the suggestions, but I think that's not part of the motion necessarily, but I think if you could include that as some of the discussion, so that when the committee meets, Michael, they'll have that report. I mean, we're not making and remaking sidewalks tonight. What we're trying to do is get this going, and by sending this to the committee with our suggestions, I think you've got it going.
Are we going to see it one more time after the committee picks where they want those?
Oh, yes, yes, you make the final decision.
I'm ready for a.
But the work is going to be done outside of this room by the committee.
I can all, sounds good.
Are you ready for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you. And you've actually done a good part of the next, um, letter D. So you're not rescinding anything on that ordinance at this point.
We could take that up next time if we wanted to.
Yes, we can, yes, we can. I will leave that on the agenda. And number, or letter D under nine, is update reconstruction and repair of town roads and sidewalks. I think we've done the sidewalks piece, so that leads the roads and the miscellaneous capital expenditures, and Rick has some suggestions on those as well.
I didn't have too much, other than I would hope that you folks, when, when we discussed roads back in June, you had asked me to give you an estimate of what it would cost to reconstruct Brownstone Avenue. That was the key road, and I spent a fair amount of time and came back to you and said, three and a half million bucks. I think maybe that thought has changed, or I'm not sure where you're at. Now, another road that is at least as problematic, if not more, would be Spring Street, the upper part of Spring Street, which we applied for a grant for, did not receive. We've had water main break since, they become very expensive and troublesome. So I would ask you to, again, looking for moving forward on a road or roads, I need some help from you to, and some direction from you as to what you would like to do for a road improvement project.
Do we have a rough estimate on the upper portion, or am I pretty sure?
Yes, I do, I, I believe that, that, so if we're talking about Spring Street from High Street to East Main Street, which is the area, it's a very poor road with a half-hearted sidewalk with water main breaks and all kinds of things, it's going to be a difficult road to do. I'm, I'm guessing, I, I believe my estimate back a few years ago was between seven hundred and fifty and a million. I'm guessing, I'm, I'm, approximation would be approximately, at this point, a million bucks. And I'm just, that's a very, very approximate number, but that's a number.
And what it, Susan, on that, what, what were we, two and a half million, or three and a half million in roads?
Yeah, you got two and a half.
Two point five.
A million in sidewalks.
Yep.
And a million in sidewalks, it's two point five in roads.
So possibly to get a start on things, you know, I'm, I'm, again, I'm in a place where I need direction from you as to what project would you like me to do, or projects, and I would not suggest more than one at a time with the sidewalks and everything else on your plate. You know, if, for example, you said, we want to go out with Brownstone, I'm going to tell you, you don't have enough money. And if you say you want to do Spring Street, I can say, yeah, that's probably the, probably, in my opinion, the next road you might want to do, and the next step on that road really is to, is to proceed with getting an, getting the town engineer to, you know, get some survey, get some information, and, and move forward. That would probably be the next practical step, if that's the road.
It's also within the half-mile of the schools, so you would get not only the road redone and address some of the other needs, but you would also get sidewalks. There are no sidewalks there, there's blacktop.
There is a sidewalk, a half of a sidewalk.
Well, let me say, from East Main to High Street, there is a section that is blacktopped. Some of it has grass next to the road, most of it doesn't. The part right near High Street has some grass, but it's blacktop, it's not concrete, and as you come down, it's simply a white line that goes down to East Main, until you get to about the intersection with Graystone's driveway, and then it becomes a concrete sidewalk down to East Main. So it's a, it's a mixture, concrete from High, I mean, from East Main to Graystone's exit driveway, and then blacktop up to High with some shoulder, mostly no shoulder. And that is an area that children can walk to school, it's very difficult. I know walking that route, because I walk it a lot, it's pretty tricky. And there's only one side in that case.
I have a comfort level, knowing a lot of these roads, driving on every day, I have a comfort level with picking that as our starting road.
I do, too.
Yes, at all.
We want to entertain a motion tonight to do that?
Yes.
So moves from, from East Main to High.
Proceed with replacement of Spring Street from East Main to High, as part of the bond.
Do we want to say proceed with an estimate, or proceed with, or we don't care?
Proceed with the necessary work, Rick, and you're going to have to come back.
You got to remember, half of this road is to replace the water, so you got to realize, where's that money coming?
Is that in your?
Well, I will tell you that in the motion that was passed for the, the bond, it says the reconstruction and repair of various town roads and roadside elements, which shall include, but shall not be limited to, related water and sewer infrastructure improvements in the amount of two point five million dollars, and sidewalks, including sidewalks located adjacent to the town school facilities in the amount of one million dollars, with specific roads and sidewalks to be determined by the Board of Selectmen. So that was the resolution that was presented.
So, and through you, Susan.
Yes.
Rick, so if the, the sewer repair work that needs to be done on, on the water main, on Spring Street, what's your best guesstimate as to?
Well, again, the total project, the original thought of improving Spring Street was because of the water.
Right.
And then when we looked at it, we said it only makes common sense to, see, because what's going to happen there, see, is I have to, you got an existing water main there that breaks, you know, I just can't rip that up and put another one, I got to leave that one and put a one on the other side and keep water flowing and all that junk, and at the same time, I want to correct the drainage and the, so all, so my estimate at the time was, like I say, a million dollars. The only question I had for you, and it's really not my question, it's, are, is it going to be a water main, is the water main part going to be charged to the water department, which it typically has been, or is the general taxpayer going to pay for the entire improvement, irregardless? See, that's, and it's kind of a moot point, that's something for you to decide. If you're saying to proceed, I'd love to, I'll, I'll get going on something.
Those kind of details will have to work out, but you are, you are authorized as a board to include water and sewer infrastructure, so.
And, and you're right on that, I do want to move forward, so I'm saying, I'm getting to the end before I get down the middle. I think, I'm not sure, now I see what you're saying, using the general, basically, general fund money, paying for a water main, I don't know, I know typically we always pay back when we borrow money and we put it into water or sewer, it's then to be repaid at some point, I think that's kind of where the thought process is going, so, obviously, you can look at it. at it, I'm not sure how that works, and I think it's supposed to be self-sufficient. But having said that, I still think we need to proceed and do this, and then figure out, we've done it in the past with our other bills, when we're in the negative, we just use the general fund and we fix it, and I think it's supposed to be repaid in time, and maybe that's how we look at this, and maybe that needs to be added to a future bond, or for a water sewer bond to be then repaid to the general, which then we can do some other repairs with it, but, and, and that's more for the lawyer to look at, but I think at the end of the day, we're, and very valid, I want to make that clear.
We're also going to be looking at the potential of using the USDA rural money. And I have a meeting scheduled with Tom Robinson, for I believe it's May 2nd, we're going to meet with Bruce Chudwick, and we're going to meet with David Eisenthal, our finance advisor. So, we will then bring back to you their, their suggestions as to how we proceed, whether it's bond indebtedness, or whether it's USDA rural development, their rates may be more attractive at this point, and we'll bring that back to you. But it's helpful that you are saying this about sidewalks tonight, and it's helpful that you're saying that Spring Street is the road we want to work on. You know, it's, where it gets charged to is something you can talk about, point is it has to be done, that water main has to be replaced, correct, Rick?
Yes.
The road will have to be replaced, and the sidewalks put in place. You're going to have a much improved infrastructure in the town, and that is used quite a bit as the way of getting water to our schools, and it's also a road that is a main road that connects our lot in town. You said you use that road all the time, because it does connect you to go to the schools, as well as to the town hall and other Main Street businesses. So the motion on the table is to direct the Public Works Director and company to proceed with the replacement of Spring Street, and using the authorization that we have under the bond that was passed, the referendum question, I should say, that was passed in November.
And just for the record, I just, as we were talking about, I just, I just realized, I'm part owner of a house on the corner of that road, if anybody wants to be abstained from the vote, I have no problem, I don't believe it's going to affect my decision, but I just want to put that on the record.
Thank you. It doesn't concern me.
You'd not gain any more than anyone else on the road, so. But that's good that you brought it up, that's what we should.
Yeah.
Okay, you ready for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries, thank you very, very much, everyone.
Did somebody second that?
Yeah, did you?
Fred made it, I seconded it.
Oh.
Fred?
Yeah, I, I, I made the motion, correct.
Yeah.
Fred made the motion, Ben seconded it. Thank you. Any appointments to boards and commissions tonight? New business, you have a resolution in front of you, as Kitch pointed out before the meeting, this is a, a resolution that we present to you on historical document preservation grant every year, and it is brought to you by the town clerk, and Ryan Curley could not be in attendance tonight, but he has provided to us historical document preservation grant resolution, and I told him I would report back to him. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries, thank you. The next is the tax suspense list of seven thousand one hundred eighty-nine dollars and nine cents. Motor vehicle, six thousand seven hundred fifty-two dollars and forty-nine cents. Motor vehicle supplemental, four hundred thirty-six dollars and sixty cents are on the tax suspense list. This means that these are numbers that Nancy DiGeralamo does not anticipate collecting, however, they are still due to the town, and should she collect and is successful, which she will continue to do, she will certainly take that money in. But it's to give a more accurate description of what is actually indebted to the town, and she feels that these are not easily collected, if I could say, so they're on the suspense list. Is there a motion to approve this tax suspense list?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Yes.
So does the motor vehicle department work with the SCM these kinds of things, and, so this could occur because people move but don't change their address legally? How does this occur?
Yes, that's part of it, or it could be that she has tried valiantly, and she's unable to contact, as address unknown is the reason.
Yeah.
In other cases, the person is deceased, and I believe those are the only two reasons that she lists here, address unknown, so she can't contact the individual, and then deceased, because the person is no longer with us.
Okay, so, so I, so I need to understand better than if, if we are obligated to report a change of address, people aren't doing this, and they're just, they're general scottlers.
Or she just doesn't know where they live, Kitch, is what I think she's saying, she's, she has sent to their last address.
To this address.
Right.
So they have moved, so then, if, if, if the system worked correctly, motor vehicle department would have their, their new address listed.
I know, in fact, one gentleman on here is actually deceased, so I will tell her that, that's why his address is unknown.
So could, could you, I mean, I don't know how long this process takes to try to find them out, but let's say in three months, could you give us a report of, of where this
Sure.
shakes out?
Of what maybe has been collected?
Yes, that would be great, that would be great information, I just, just wondering, you know, what kind of return we ever see.
And, as you look at the list, if you know where someone lives, you could certainly give that information to the office.
Okay, thank you.
In fact, I know one right now. And when people go to register their vehicles, these will be amounts that will have to be paid in order for them to successfully register.
Okay.
So motion's been made and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries, and a note that in three months we'll revisit and give an update as to what has or has not been.
Thank you.
Thank you. The charter requires this board, as the Water and Sewer Authority, to adopt the water and sewer budgets before May 1 of every year, because the water and sewer budgets do not go to referendum. What goes to referendum, of course, is just the general fund. So, the budgets are in front of you, and we review these during the budget season, and I would entertain a motion to pass and adopt the water and sewer budgets for the 2017, 2018 fiscal year.
So moved.
Seconded, seconded by Kitch, motion made by Ben. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries unanimously, Sharon? And then we have refund of excess payments, Michael?
Um, Halik Yost, seven dollars and fifty-four cents.
Sum of, seconded by Kitch?
Michael Darna, two hundred twelve dollars and forty-eight cents.
Okay, seconded by Kitch. All in favor of the first?
Aye.
And the second?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions, any knows? Both those passed unanimously, Sharon? And the last one?
Third and final, Bruce Morrison, sixty-eight dollars and forty-two cents.
Seconded, seconded by Kitch. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Status and committee reports, I think we had a good committee report, and I want to thank the sidewalk committee, I think you've done a great job so far, and I appreciate that. I have nothing else to report at this point. Public comment? Shirley?
Rick had commented about the sidewalks from Middlesex Avenue out to, what is it, Indian Hill Avenue? Okay.
Wait a minute, you mean the sidewalks from Middlesex Avenue to Indian Hill Avenue on Main Street?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, you did, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
All that ways, huh?
However, on the opposite side of the street, there's a sidewalk from Fairview Street, a little ways past Co-Avenue on the other side of the street. And you're talking.
Actually, I think the sidewalks go even further, Shirley, don't they? They go from, actually.
No, it doesn't go up to Cogal Hill.
Nope, but it goes up to, beyond Church Street, and it ends where that, there's a greenhouse on the right-hand side?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next to Frankburg Mount, left.
Yes.
Right, so, I mean.
Goes beyond Fairview. Right?
I'm going from Fairview to Church Street, past the Methodist Church, up past those two houses.
That's it, you're correct.
So.
It's on both sides at that point, right?
Right, and Rick was talking about injuries in relation to that being the most high area that I would assume is on both sides of the street, and unfortunately, Eternity Church is of realness, and it's not like some of yours. Because of the flagstone.
Thank you.
I know. Haven't bounced off any of those things.
Any informal general discussion tonight?
I want to.
Susan?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I just wanted to thank Brian Flood.
Yeah, me too. Yeah, I just, to sit here this evening without Brian feels like a loss, not only for this body, but for the town, you know, I served with him just a little less than a year, and I think, now whether you agree with his decisions, or you didn't agree with his decisions, he was a great critical thinker, and I think he always made his decisions on what he thought best for the town, so respecting his obligations to his professional life and to his family life, I just want to congratulate him on his service for the town. It's what we wish from, for everybody, that they would get involved, and they, and they think about what's best for those we serve. But I will personally, Mr., he made me feel welcome, and I hope that we get somebody that's just as great.
Agreed.
Yeah, no, there's no question he'll be missed, he was unique, and contributed an awful lot to the town and to the board, we'll all miss him.
He had an incredible amount of wisdom, and I personally endorsed a lot of the things he said, and I think these are going to be big shoes to fill.
Yeah.
He will definitely be missed.
Maybe you'd like to make a motion to express thanks, and.
So much.
I think we should.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Motion made by Kitch and seconded by Ben to thank Brian Flood for his many years of service, and, and good, excellent service, and that he will be missed.
And if I could amend it, have we have a little, was it a paper?
Sure.
Do you do those?
Yes, absolutely.
The amount of years that he served.
Yes. Certificate of appreciation.
Yes.
We'll do that.
And we, can we bring him in here to give it to?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I think we still need to vote him out.
Yep.
Oh, first you have to vote him.
Yep.
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, she's sorry, sorry.
Aye. All, all are in favor of that, so that we extend our thanks, and that they've directed the first selectman to, in behalf of the Board of Selectmen, to issue a certificate of appreciation to Mr. Flood, and invite him to come to an upcoming meeting. And that was unanimously approved. Motion made and seconded. I don't have anything to add tonight to follow up, we'll continue to work on these items, so I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.